Oh, let me get all this in. And welcome you to the May 13th Douglas County Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. I'm just a few things before we get started, we're all getting more comfortable with Zoom. And our Zoom supported Douglas County Commission meetings, I wanted to pass on a few reminders about how we run our meetings during this time of social distancing. If visual aids are used during the meeting, the presenter will share the screen with the call. Participants will not be able to view them without a computer, smartphone, or tablet. All participants will be entered into the meeting with their audio muted. Meaning the commission and the public will not be able to hear you. Presenters will be unmuted when their agenda item comes up. We asked that all online presenters use good conference call etiquette and mute their line when not speaking and introduce themselves each time they speak. If you have a public comment on an agenda item or under regular public comment, please use the raise your hand function on Zoom. Staff will call on you and unmute you. We asked that speakers give their name and address for the minutes. The county reserves the right to shut off any microphone or remove any speaker from the meeting if they are vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. The chat function has been disabled. And a recording of this meeting will be made available on our website after the meeting. All right. With that down. We'll start with our consent agenda. And we have two items on the consent agenda. And one and two, does any commissioner have an item they would like pulled from the consent agenda?
I do not.
No, doesn't look that way. Does any member of the public have an item they'd like pulled from the consent agenda?
We don't have anyone here for that, nope.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. And for those of you who are new to our meetings, we'll check in with Sarah at the courthouse to see if any public is there. And we'll also check in with Jill Joliker online to see if anybody wants to pull an item, Jill?
I don't see anybody that has raised their hands.
Great. Okay, do I have a motion to approve item one and two from the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, did all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, passes three oh. We'll move on to our regular agenda items. We have two regular agenda items and the first one is for one, two, four, two Massachusetts Street demolition application for certificate of appropriate for demolition. It's an administrative item, so I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you, commissioners. Jay Zemmerstein is here as well to contribute to this item as if their commissioner has questions. Several, several months ago, the commission discussed and decided to submit to the city of Lawrence a request to demolish 1242 Massachusetts, which is the former Public Works Administration and Engineering Office. And that was really based off of our about two years worth of work related to our space needs and our downtown master plan work. As well as the condition of the building and and our consultation with the city of Lawrence Planning Office. About the structure, about the ability to demolish it. And we were really, we consulted with a number of people in that process to determine. You know, if that was the right move for the organization and and really our submittal to demolish the building came after consultation with planning that there would be support to for that application. As the commission knows, that application was heard by the Historic Resources Commission a few months back now. And and there were some, some questions and there were some questions from the public related to some the some ordinances that were on a part of city a part of the city code related to buildings in the environs of South Park that were not initially considered in planning staff's determination of support for our application for demolition. Once city staff was made aware of that, those ordinances and and reviewed those ordinances in light of our application, they have indicated to us, and I believe there's information in the packet that their intent would be to now change their recommendation on the demolition permit to not, not supportive of of an application for demolition. So at this time, you know, given that we really moved forward based off of advice and feedback we were getting from not only planning, but other historic preservation professionals about the building. And all since that has changed and that information is is not what it was when we first made that submittal. Staff is recommending that the county commission retract that application of appropriateness for the demolition of the structure and and let staff regroup a little bit in terms of what what we think would be best for that site and that structure. And I guess I'd stand for any questions you have on that. And and it could talk also about kind of what staff will do during this time that we regroup in on the facility.
So I, I have a question, it's, it's for Jay. It's a little, a little bit aside from what our action needs to be tonight, but I'm really. It would help me understand. But one of the quandaries about this is, is you know, different perceptions of the value of that building. And the value of it to the county versus the value of it to the preservation. So that alliances out there and so I, I know in some of the meetings I watched of the HRC. There, there's a lot of information or intimation, at least that there are some structural concerns about the building that, I mean, that led us to believe that the building really wasn't rehabable and wasn't, you know, it's not accessible, it's not really appropriate for office use or any, any, you know, use that we can think of for the county at least right now. So I mean, Jay, can you just describe briefly what, what the technical deficiencies are?
Yes, this is Jay Zemmerstein. Commissioner Thelman, there was a report as part of the application that goes into the HRC for review of the application. There's a requirement for a structure or view that is, that was performed and it is required. And in that document, they they noted a number of items, problems with the building, settlement issues, a variety of other things. Frankly, some of some new things that were discovered when we were doing some investigation on as part of the PSIQ, but what the long and the short of the structural report is, there's discussions of how there, there were, there is the potential to stabilize the structure, but there's no guarantee from a standpoint of structural engineering now that doing that today will not prevent a similar problem in the future. The building was built in the seventies and that kind of predated a whole lot of geotechnical work where you look at the, the ground, I'm sorry, below the building. And and then prep that many times properly, it's out of my reach, hold on one second. My apologies, I'm back. Wrong ears though. Okay. So the structural engineering report identified a settlement, I believe in the amount of roughly two inches on the, on the northern portion of the building, which was the seventies portion of it. There are some obvious settlement that's happening in the building, similar to what you, I think you would see in historic, not historic, in older structures. So many times when things are being looked at from a whether buildings are just old or historic is the ability to maintain those structures and and hold on to what the, many times there's defined as character defining features. And so the effort then becomes, how do you stabilize and and manage to keep that building viable to move forward? As for the value of the building in terms of for use of county, I think there's some investigation going on. I can't say that I've done a whole lot in terms of that type study, what, what a good purpose for that building might be. It has a, it has a number of issues, as I mentioned, I think we have some termite issues associated with some of the main structural pieces that we discovered even later than the original structural report was done. But we have below, below slab on grade mechanical, mechanical chases, which was done back then, but those are notorious for collecting some really bad stuff. And it's just not a good way of delivering mechanical systems to buildings, so. The building certainly has its challenges from a standpoint of reuse. And whether or not we have a dedicated purpose that would ideally be suited there, I think is yet to be determined. Is there more I can give you there?
No, that, I mean, that's, that's helpful. I, I just think, I mean, for, for my sake and and memory, kind of vague memory of some of the litany of issues with the building, I think it's important for for the citizens to know. You know, is there taxpayer dollars that have been invested in that building so far and would have to be invested in the building to, you know, for the county to use it and you know, or other, other purposes we might consider. I think that's one of the most important things we have to think about. It's that it's a, it's a government owned building and so taxpayers have some consideration in whatever the future of the building is. And so this is a tough one, I have to say I'm frustrated with this, with this particular situation, but as I'm sure you are. In terms of the staff time that's been spent on it and the and the lack of I think full if not necessarily full transparency, but the lack of knowledge or memory at least of the ordinances that pertain to this building, I think. So I'm sorry, I'm getting, getting ahead if you all have other, other questions. Is, is anyone here from planning staff or HRC or?
No, we didn't ask them to be on this call specifically, you know, I really feel like this is, this is a commission decision as to whether or not we want to withdraw this application. And we, we did tell them, we would let them know tomorrow and Fridays when they would put the packet together for the HRC meeting, which would happen next week. So we could withdraw our, our, our application in time here and and not have to, and not have to go before the HRC. I really feel like that would just give us some time to, to reconsider what we, what we literally learned at the 11th hour in consideration of the structure. You know, it's important to note here that in most everyone's review, planning staff, preservation staff, preservation professionals. The north side, the, the newer portion of the structure is not, is not significant, is not valuable from a historic perspective and and also has a number of structural issues as well. So that complicates our decision making here. You know, what of these structural issues that and the cost to renovate are tied to which piece of the building? Is it with the sanctuary, is it, is it with the other side? So I, I'd like us to just have some time as staff to evaluate whether or not it would make sense if there is something that the county could do with that remaining sanctuary structure that provides use and value to Douglas County, or is it, is it just not, is there just not a good public use for it? And if our governmental use? And do we need to see if there are other, other folks that would be interested in, you know, restoring the facility? So.
Would, would, would another, I'm sorry, would another avenue though be to see what the process would be for the city to reconsider its ordinance? To see if that, if that ordinance still stands 20 years later?
Yeah, we did, we did talk about that briefly with city staff, you know, I think the question is, you know, even if we, I think, but I don't want them to, I think we've got to either decide because there's a HRC meeting next week. And I don't think that process to have them review whether or not that ordinance is something they want to keep, it can happen that fast, so.
Oh, no, no, I, no, I'm not, I'm not asking for anything to be done that quickly. I guess I want to just make sure that that's one of the things that, that is thought about.
We did, we did mention that to them that we would ask for their, their review of if this, the Secretary of Interior standards were still consistent with current plan, the current plan and the current codes, because they, they are older. And so we just asked for that review. If they came back and said, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take that, you know, we're gonna revise that ordinance and not use those standards anymore. I think we would still want to get additional information to verify, you know, that we could in essence demolish the structure.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, I think when we talked about this before, we talked about how dangerous the roof was and just can you talk a little bit about liability, you know, in the short term or, you know, obviously we don't have anybody working there or doing anything there, but we've had people in there, you know, can you just give us a bit of an update on that and what, what our thoughts are there?
I mean, the building is still insured from a liability perspective, but you know, we, we had, you know, it was not a part of our plan to reuse this space. So we had not been making investments into it for the last few years, we did for many, many years. But, but over the last two or three years since public worked, moved locations, you know, we haven't really invested, been investing in the space. And so I would say that I think it's important that, you know, I, I don't think it's safe to be used at this point. And we're, we'll continue to not use it until we evaluate what we can do to either, you know, bring it back before the commission in terms of what, what happens next on that structure.
Any other questions? Any member of the public have comment on this item? Sarah?
There's no one here for that item.
Jill?
Nope, I'm not seeing anything.
I'll just say, I, I mean, it seems that retracting the application is appropriate in my mind, but I, I share Commissioner Thelman's frustration. We've spent a lot of hours and energy and thoughts and planning. And we rely on the planning department to provide us good advice and, and, and before we spend money on things like structural analysis and those types of things, that's taxpayer money that we're spending. And when we don't get the best advice or we miss important pieces of information, that's frustrating because now we've spent money and time and effort on it and now we're having to back up and essentially restart a whole process. I mean, we surely don't want to. You know, I mean, we surely don't want to jeopardize a historic resource, but at the same time, we, we would have liked to have known that it was a historic resource, that there was an ordinance that was in place earlier before we spent all this time on it. So it sort of makes me, I feel, you know, last week we had a, an applicant who felt like he was getting run around by bureaucracy and now I think we sort of felt it ourselves, so. Just, those are my thoughts.
Well, and I agree and I, I won't go on, but yes, I, I share everybody's frustration and you know, I mean, we spent all this money to find out that this building is not structurally sound and that there's all these issues and it would cost, I think it was millions of dollars in taxpayer dollars to even get it to a point where it was safe. And so I just feel like this has come out of nowhere that now somebody's saying it's historic, but I, you know, it still has to be safe. You know, we can't just let it sit there and, you know, say that it's historic and let it rot away. But we're also not going to spend millions of dollars, or we shouldn't spend millions of dollars is my personal belief in taxpayer dollars for, for something that, you know, there's some question there, but anyway, once again, it goes back to the process and yeah, the frustration and and I can feel for some of the people that come, come before us because we now see that we've, we've had the same, same thing happen to us.
But I, I just want to voice one more thing and then I think it's pretty clear what we need to do is that I think we're gonna have to work on building some bridges. This project may be, that might be the thing that causes me at least and maybe our county government to, to work with the preservation community and work with the HRC and work with staff. Because I, you know, I have to say, watching the first HRC meeting where this issue came up. And listening to that board talk about intimate that the county doesn't care about historic preservation in the county was guilty of demolition by neglect or, you know, variety of, of comments made to to give the, to give the to, to make it sound as though the county was careless and uncaring about this project. And I think, I think it's important for folks to know that the opposite is true. Douglas County is known for its both care for and investment in historic structures, the, the whole historic conservation council, so that, you know, over time, millions of dollars spent to try and help every corner of the county with historic preservation buildings and, and land and, and stories. And we have more than most counties in Kansas, if not any county in Kansas invested a lot of time and energy and taxpayer dollars in in projects devoted to historic preservation. So I, I feel like we, this, this process going forward is going to have to revisit some of that to help that HRC understand our work in this county toward historic preservation and then help staff understand our need to have accurate information as we move along. And help us understand how to work with and talk with those folks and you know, kind of get past this and figure out what the best thing is to do with that structure. So anyway, lots of work to do on that, on that end, but in the meantime, I think unless you all have anything more to say, I'm happy to make the motion. So I would move that we retract the current application for certificate of appropriateness for demolition of the structure located at 1242 Massachusetts Street.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Unopposed, thank you, thank you, Sarah, thank you, Jay, appreciate that. Let's move on to item 2.2, which is a provision of quarantine and isolation housing for homeless precariously housed populations. It's another administrative item, take it away, Sarah.
Thank you, commissioners, and I'm going to turn it over to Jill Joliker here in a minute to, to walk through this. I do want to say before I do, this is a direct result of work done by Unified Command with our, particularly our Housing and Human Services Branch, which includes dozens of nonprofits and individuals and groups and organizations in our community working together to, to address needs of our most vulnerable populations as a result of the COVID-19 epidemic. And I'm very proud of the work that we've done in this area over the last 60 days or so and incredibly proud of Jill Joliker and her efforts leading this branch and dozens and dozens and dozens of meetings she has had with numerous groups inside this branch. This particular topic has been something that has been discussed from the beginning. And we've been, and it are bringing it to you at this stage is not because there's been a lot of difference in opinion as to how it gets done, but simply it has been a very difficult problem to crack. And, and I, I think Jill can go into it in a little bit more detail, but this has been something we've been talking about for a period of time and and I'm glad we finally have some answers to be able to tell those working, those working in homelessness and congregate living environments, but it's, we, we still have a lot of work to do here in this area. So Jill, if there's more you'd like to add to that?
I think the only thing that I would add is that I just echo what Sarah said that very early on, I think, I remember one instance when everything and when this pandemic first set in, one instance with one of the providers that's been engaged in this that had to have a client stay in a hotel for a period of testing and how scared everyone was and how much the agency just wanted to do what was best to protect not only their staff, but also the clients. And how, and that applies, you know, to all the agencies that have been engaged in this. And I too am really proud of the work that we've done in this group and that, that we've got, had from the very beginning, the support from the Unified Command to make sure that we're focusing, we are, have a dedicated focus on this population. And I, I don't think that's true in every community. And so I think it's, it's great news for our community, but it has been a struggle in trying to develop what has been the best way to go about doing it in order to meet the needs of the, the practical needs of the agencies, because this need could come up right, it could be happening right now. Somebody could be getting referred for testing and that person needs to, and that client needs to be staying at a hotel or cannot stay at one of the congregate site facilities. So we needed, I mean, it would have been nice to have this weeks ago, but I'm ha, really happy to be where we're at at this point with this project. I think it remains to be seen how many of these, how much of this money will, will actually be utilized. And I think that's the beauty of the framework that we put together, that the, the money is there only if it's needed. And that was not, that is, that, that was a result of a compromise. So between the real, the reality, the financial realities of the city and the county and the safety and you know, interests of the agencies that are actually housing these clients and working with them. So I feel really good about the compromise because at the end of the day, it does what's, what's absolutely best and safest for our most vulnerable citizens and the really selfless staff that are at these community partner agencies.
So we could walk through some of the specifics of how we think this will work if that would be helpful for the commission? Okay, so what I think we envision happening is that we have tentative agreement with, and, and I don't mean tentative like, I don't think it'll, we have agreement, verbal agreement from the city of Lawrence that whatever costs are incurred by this program will ultimately be shared 50/50 by both the city and the county. As congregate living environments, which really is Lawrence Community Shelter, Willow Domestic Violence Center, Bridges, Transitional Housing for Burt Nash, Family Promise. Whom I'm missing in that list, Jill, I think that's most of the folks, maybe DECA, Women at First Step. Yeah, if they, if, as they begin to bring more people back into their environment, they will screen them. If someone is screened that they need to be tested for COVID-19, they, we have expanded testing, so they would go to be tested. Before they introduce that person to their congregate living Before they introduce that person to their congregate living environment where there you can't necessarily isolate and quarantine folks effectively. They would use this hotel space to house that person until test results came back. If they came back negative, then they would move into the congregate living environment. If they came back positive, they would stay in that hotel environment. There will be staff from those nonprofit agencies onsite at the hotel managing these folks and working to provide for their needs. And 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 I think they will work, those agencies will work together to manage that staff and manage that situation effectively. We have agreed to a reimbursement cap amount of a certain amount of dollars per night for a hotel room. And then we have agreed to reimburse these agencies for the staff time and expenses associated with supporting folks in that environment. And we've said that we will handle this all on a reimbursement basis. If we exceed twenty thousand dollars total. In a month. That's for the whole program, both the city and the county. I will, we will come back to the commission and and discuss this again. And we have, we have an ability with two weeks' notice to end the program. I would like to keep this kind of month to month. Until we really get a sense of what's happening and just there's so many unknowns and variables in this pandemic. That this gives us some flexibility to see how this goes. I fully it this is, you know, we were really hopeful early on. That there would be some federal dollars that might be used, be available to to pay for this. I think we're still hopeful that that's something that will come through. To date, the state has not indicated that they would they would prefer not to use hotels and they would. They would prefer to do rapid rehousing and they are financially supporting rapid rehousing and that's something that. We're working on and with the City of Lawrence and their ESG funds to do in in our community. But they there might, federal dollars might come down that would be better poised to this. So we're hopeful that eventually. You know, some funds will be come into consideration to cover these costs for our community. It's it's just really right now trying to handle the federal and state dollars coming down is a really moving target and it's it's constantly changing. And we we, when I say we, the city and the county in in partnership together, working on this effort. Agreed that we felt like this would not make a strong application at this point in time for emergency service grant funds. So I I think this is probably the responsible thing to do at this time to make sure that. These agencies have some assuredness that that we can support this so that they can begin to accept and. Bring more clients back into their system. That previously they had not had that they had been closing the doors to to new folks that need these services.
Yeah, and I would just add this, you know, the experience, so to speak, with clients that have needed. These hotel rooms to date has been, I want to say it's it hasn't been any more than ten collectively among all the agencies that have been involved. So I don't, I think, you know, there's definitely a possibility that those numbers could grow as the phases continue to. Proceed and as these agencies, as Sarah was just speaking to. Begin to gradually increase their capacity because all these agencies have. Got down to, I think Lawrence Community Shelter, not only did they. Is their family, their family side of their shelter now empty, but they've got their singles down to approximately thirty people. Which is good because the the folks that they had in there before are all have all been moved on to more permanent housing solutions. So there's. Really good stories that came out of that, but Lawrence Community Shelter very much wants to be able to. Increase its capacity safely and gradually. In a way that is responsible and reflective of consistent with the Health Department and the Health Department has been such a great partner to us. In this work group and the others. There they have staff there two days a week, helping with working with clients and we have a great. There's an expectation now that if there happened to be a confirmed case of COVID nineteen in a facility like the Lawrence Community Shelter. Whether it was staff or. Or clients, the Health Department would determine that would would decide at that point that they would test everybody, staff and clients to better understand. What the threat level is there and to manage it moving forward. The Health Department has just been a great partner. And they're advising this group as well on how to increase capacity in a safe manner.
And I I guess I did want to speak to a little bit too, just the big picture in terms of where we think we're at in terms of local response for. A variety of different programs related to COVID nineteen. Several weeks ago, the commissioners voted on a request from the. Lawrence Restaurant Association and USD four ninety seven for a school-based feeding program in partnership with restaurants. We have been informed that the Lawrence School Foundation has been able to fundraise enough funds to offset any. Expenses that the school district will not get reimbursed for related to that program. So. That's good news in terms of the need for local tax dollars to come to support of that program. So this program is the the next program we're bringing before you in your packet. After. The MOU, there's a memo from the City of Lawrence that. Updates really the best of our knowledge right now, what our partnership with the City of Lawrence is in terms of. The ability to bring down CDVG, which is Community Development Block Grant and Emergency Shelter Grant Funds. To our community and what we would be making application for. I I think it's important if there's members of the public listening to this for folks to understand that currently the City of Lawrence and Douglas County have not received one penny. Of of funds related to COVID nineteen response. All of these programs are, you either need to apply for the grant and. With an application as to how you're going to use it, and then the funds are received, or it's FEMA based, which is all reimbursement based. And as the commissioners know, Douglas County has still not been reimbursed for any expenses related to the May twenty nine twenty nineteen tornado. So FEMA reimbursements can be delayed significant periods of time. That being said, I think that chart outlines what we we're hoping to align, which is. The federal dollars and the state dollars coming down, what programs are best aligned to what those grants are looking for. And and then where are the holes? And I would say the next hole potentially coming to us is related to community feeding. We are still really struggling to be able to find federal and state grant support to support Just Food. Which has had an unprecedented increase in the number of people it has served over the last sixty days. And we have a request that has been that has come through this branch. And that Unified Command is trying to identify resources for related to Just Food and this six-month timeframe for expanded feeding. You know, we keep trying to find one thing and and it slips through our fingers in terms of its. Its appropriateness for this particular ask. We're gonna meet again tomorrow and talk about it again. But I do think we we may be bringing something forward to the commission that provides a backstop for. Just food in this process. It's 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 discouraging to that there has not been something that has been. A better fit. I would say that most of the feeding support that's happening at the state level is going to the three largest food banks in Kansas. And Just Food is is not one of those food banks and receives food from those food banks. But that food is largely in the form of commodities, so actual cans of food. Not in financial support to offset what we've been doing in this community since March. Which is which is buying more food and and distributing it to citizens. So. We think there's some possibility for some FEMA reimbursement for parts of it. There's a potential that there's. Another grant that could offset a portion of it. We're just really all working pretty fast and furious to try to find out what we can. And but I anticipate that coming to commissioners soon. For consideration.
Sarah, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you walking us through sort of how this. Is could be distributed. I think if at first glance, if you hear we're going to. But. Some of our homeless population into hotel rooms. Without understanding the sequence of that event, it 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 sort of maybe works against some of the science that I've understood around COVID nineteen. So that that's really helpful for me at least. Has there been any thought and maybe it's a plan in place if if a person does. Come to the shelter or does come to use one of these services. And they're tested and they need to be in these hotel rooms. What's the thought? I mean, are are they then going to the shelter after they? The testing comes back negative? What if they decide not to go? What if they have a change of heart or a change of plans there? Has there been any thought around that?
Well, I mean, I would say that, you know, we we did discuss this pretty closely with that group and and the qualifiers of if this person is considered homeless. And I think, you know, I trust the the professionals that work with these clients on a daily basis to. To know whether or not this person has any other option available to them. Obviously, people leave the shelter all the time. You know, we can't force anyone to necessarily stay anywhere, but I think the intent would be to try to, if they were negative, obviously, they have that. Have free choice to do what they want to do. And if they don't want to then go into the shelter, you know, I think that would be their choice. But it, you know, it just it's every situation is going to be a little bit different, you know, it, you know, if it's if it's a domestic violence situation. They may still really need that resource to make sure that they are safe. And they now Willow can be assured that that person won't expose their staff and their other clients to to COVID. But it's a it it's really been a moving target, which is why it's been so difficult to to nail down in that regard and. You know, but I do think that this will be an important piece for those agencies to begin to accept more clients again. They have really not been accepting new clients. And and that will be helpful for making sure our community does stay safe in this incident because we will not have folks that are. We will have less folks that are unsheltered.
Well, and I would just say that. For one, at least one of the individuals that was referred for testing from the Lawrence Community Shelter. They. Because the executive director did not feel comfortable with the finance, their finances at that point to be able to book a hotel because we are still working through the. The this agreement. She tried her best to create a space. Within the Lawrence Community Shelter where she could try to quarantine that individual. And it was a less than ideal situation for everybody and that individual refused and they left. And there's nothing anybody could do about that and but but the executive director did not feel good about that. And I I I know like after that, she just kind of. She doubled down on her efforts to get this done. And she's been just. She's been very, very compromised in spirit, but she feels very strongly about. That this is a tool that she and the other providers need to have in their toolbox to continue to do what they do, and they want to keep doing what they're doing. But. Yeah, so it's situations have arisen before and the all the providers feel more confident that compliance. With quarantine recommendations while awaiting testing. Will be much more well received in a space where these clients, many of whom have some really complicated issues. They're more likely to to comply if you give them a hotel room with their own space. And some of the other efforts that we have underway that are, you could see on the the city memo that was attached to the briefing sheet. Talk about some of the other projects that we are working on, including some significant capital improvements to the Lawrence Community Shelter that will. Improve their ability to provide, at least in that facility. Potential isolation, but absolutely quarantine space. And isolate, I believe isolation as well is feasible, but it also just makes it a more supportive environment to not spread that disease.
Yeah, and that's that's the most exciting thing I think coming out of this and as a real positive is that we've been able. And I want to give Jay also some credit too. We asked Jay Zimmerge to help enter interface with. Renee and the team at Lawrence Community Shelter along with Jill to sort of identify if we could make. Sustainable, long-term capital improvements to the community shelter that could improve their ability to respond. To any sort of infectious disease event and to add individual shower space, to add quarantine space, to add isolation space. And we really feel like in that CDVG funds will be able to be used to do that and that we will try to work really rapidly to make those improvements this summer. To that space so that we can have the ability in the fall. If if there was some sort of second wave that we would have a better able to respond inside the shelter for these events. So that's really exciting to be able to say we're going to use federal funds to make, you know. Capital improvements to a building that we that this commission has talked about its inadequacies. So I'm real excited about that investment. And then I'm also really excited that. Emergency service grant funds are being aligned to do rapid rehousing and utility and rent assistance. In this community, we will, we plan to pair the K-Dads grant that Burt Nash received. With these emergency service grant funds to be able to put people in houses. Folks that are housing ready, apartment ready, shelter ready, and put them in individual apartments. And there's, there's a lot of benefits to that. They're in an individual space. And and many of them will be able to successfully, as long as they stay employed, continue to stay in that space. And it also provides relief for landlords that might be looking for people to fill that space. So. I I mean, our investment into that is is going to have some real substantial improvement for our community. And and I think it's so exciting.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
I miss Henry. Anyway, so. So I'm I'm excited about that. And I think that's a really, I wanted to include that memo so that you all kind of had an overview of. Of everything we're working on to try to really align the best need with the best. With the best project, with the best source of federal funds. And again, like, and I know she's, I know Jill feels bad, but like Jill has managed every single one of these phone calls with. You know, trying to manage kids at home and everything else going on. And. I mean, she's on countless calls a day with these providers, both for unsheltered and feeding and camping and. You know, congregate living providers and there've been, there's been a ton of great work in that space and a lot of great conversations, a lot of people helping each other out. Providing masks and cleaning supplies back and forth and and just assistance. And then the collaboration on rental assistance and utility assistance in this space and rapid rehousing is really phenomenal. And I'm incredibly proud of how tenants to homeowners and Catholic charities and all of those groups have contributed to what Family Promise is looking to do and. Burt Nash and Willow and the Community Shelter. So it's, you know, I think a lot of times we don't uplift how great these folks work together. And and this is really to me an example of of how how their network and their ability to work together is is really positioning us to use. Federal funds really effectively.
Well, thank you to Jill and she had a little Jimmy Fallon moment there. So that was great to see Henry and. He's going to be a celebrity before you know it. Thanks for sharing and Jill, that was great. Commissioners, any other questions or comments on this before we open it up to public comment?
No, no.
I I don't have any questions. I just wanted to make the comment that I was. I second everything Sarah said in terms of the value of collaboration and how it just seems to. Almost naturally flow anymore from our agencies and. Real, you know, folks who have a real sense of service about this work. But I also wanted to say I'm just particularly happy to see. City-county collaboration and even funding in this and that we're both. Both working on this together. I hope that that sets a good precedent for work to come because there's going to be lots of needs that we. You know, both both governing bodies are going to be faced with a lot of needs coming up and hope we can keep working together like that.
Thank you, Commissioner Thelma, and I I agree. You know, it's it's been. And I agree, you know, it's, it's been, I'm trying to come up with some great quote about difficult times form interesting friendships and relationships and bond folks together. But I'm, I'm not able to come up with one. But what I can say is that this process of unified command has really solidified a lot of things with our relationship with the City of Lawrence. And this is a really unique situation. I mean, the county has a significant role in human service provision. It's something we're very proud of and we do a lot of and we take seriously. But we, we do not receive community development block grant dollars. Those go to the City of Lawrence. They have received emergency shelter grants in the past and are in the pipeline to receive those as an allotment community, I think I've got that term right. And what they do and also in terms of their work in affordable housing and housing support. So this is an example where those funds are coming to them. They're not coming to Douglas County. And, and without this partnership with them, we would be, we would be in a very difficult position. So I'm incredibly pleased and supportive of how great our relationship has been with city staff on this. And they've just been totally open to whatever ideas we have. And it's been, it's been really uniquely collaborative in a way that is really refreshing. And it gives me a lot of hope for how we can proceed with future projects. But there, there is some good news here, even though I wish we had a better source of federal or state funds for this particular need, there's a, there is a lot of great news here.
Sarah, do we have any public comment on this item at the courthouse?
No.
On line?
Nope, not that I see.
Yeah, the risk of sounding a little bit like a broken record, the collaboration is what we're looking for. And not only with our community partners, but also with the city and having the health department involved to make sure best practices are being followed, I think is just fantastic. Hopefully, we can get our historic resource group and our planning department to follow suit there as we talk about how we could collaborate a little more, having just left that item and talking about how maybe we can work together a little better. But this is really, really encouraging. And I'm also want to commend you, Sarah and Jill. Sounds like Jill deserves a large part of the credit here for, for keeping that balance between government dollars and what the community organizations are supposed to be, you know, what their mission is and how they can, I think what we, what you talked about in the feeding program was a great way that we could backstop what the schools foundation and the restaurants were doing. And yet they were able to come up with those funds. That, that's to me, the way that it should work is it's each one of us playing a role and doing our part, but not managing it entirely. And that's the way we'll be able to make real progress in our community. So thanks for that and keeping, keeping strong on that. I'm happy to make a motion unless any commissioners have comments further on this. So I recommend authorize $80,000 in general fund reserves to reimburse community homeless and congregate site housing providers for costs associated with these hotel rooms to temporarily house clients in need of quarantine or isolation space.
Question about that motion, and maybe I missed something, but we're splitting the cost 40/40. Is, are we authorizing 80,000 from county general funds or 40?
Sarah, you're on mute.
Sorry, sorry about that. It would be, it would be 80,000 in expense where I would, in term to receive 40,000 in reimbursement from the City of Lawrence. So, but, but, yeah.
Sarah. Would it be good to add to that motion in agreement with the city? Because that agreement is there with the city. I mean, it seems like it would be good to add that on to the motion just to make sure. Okay, so I'll amend my motion there.
And I'm happy to second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, great work, Jill, great work, Sarah, great work, Henry. Moving on, I don't believe we have any appointments, Sarah. No. General public comment is next on our agenda. So I wanted to give our online folks a chance if they want to weigh in. Sarah, anybody at the courthouse wanting general public comment? Nope, it's a lonely space. And Jill, anybody online?
Nope, not that I can see.
Okay, great. Commissioner or administrator miscellaneous, Sarah, you want to start us off?
Yeah, just a few updates. And I'm sorry, I don't have a weekly memo for you this week. But just a few updates, we are work, unified command is going to meet tomorrow to hopefully put the finishing touches on the framework for our recovery committee moving forward, which would, you know, take sort of the next phase of what we're doing in unified command, but move it more into a recovery and resiliency effort for our community. There'll still be some definite monitoring and response that will continue in that process, but move more into how can we begin to recover as a community and how can we build resiliency to, for epidemiological and infectious disease incidents in our future. So I'm excited to get that framework launched and to get that moving forward in terms of how we continue to monitor continued opening of our community. The public health, we are anxiously awaiting news from the governor. If she is going to move to the next phase, hopefully, we will all hear soon from her as to whether or not she thinks that will move forward. Our internal group of stakeholders, internal to Douglas County group of stakeholders that is, that is reviewing that information, including Dr. Marcelino and the health department, as well as the University of Kansas, the Chamber of Commerce and school district representatives, is reviewing information and data to make sure that we feel that Douglas County is in a good position to continue to reopen. We're looking to put together some data points and in essence, a quick dashboard that the community could have access to that would see where we are lying on certain numbers. A lot of these are numbers you get now in the daily reports that are then published by public health and we do press releases on. But I think we're looking to try to transition that into more of what are some key factors that we're going to be continuing to monitor moving forward and how do we share that with the public? So I'm excited about progress in that phase. And with that, I think there'll be continued conversation amongst department heads and elected officials here at Douglas County about our, our facilities and our services and how, what, what can we do to make sure we're available to the public for what we need to be available for, but at the same time, keep our employees and the public safe moving forward. So I'm having conversations with elected officials and department heads tomorrow and hope to be able to release some information as to, given what the governor does, what might be next for Douglas County in terms of that. So and I'm just really, it's, it's, everybody's been really great to work with and proactive and knowledgeable about what they need to do in their particular areas. So that's been really helpful, because as the commissioners know, I'm halfway through budget hearings at this point. And our time, my time to be able to focus on all this effort is getting pulled in a couple of different directions. But I mean, I feel like we're getting a lot of really good information and a lot of things are coming together. So there'll be a lot more updates from me soon.
Thank you, Sarah. Commissioners, any items?
I don't have anything.
From Nancy, I'll just share that I continue to sit in on the governor's call each Friday. And we've talked a little bit about recovery dollars coming down and how counties may be able to access some of that money. And Sarah's been involved in that discussion. It was very helpful, you know, when we talked about how we could, how we communicated a unified command with the governor's plans, where it was, part of that was coming communicated through K-DHE to the health departments and partially through the governor's office. So I do appreciate the governor setting up those calls and answering questions. If either of you, if any commissioner has a question that they want us to forward to the governor for, we're happy to do that. That's something that we do with those meetings are set up by the Kansas Association of Counties. And so that's, that's a great group to help us there. So and I'll just continue to communicate information that I get through Sarah. And then she can share that with, with other commissioners as necessary. It does seem like every time we come to Wednesday, all the news that was new news is no longer new and we have a new set of news. So, you know, I don't think it's worth rehashing that. But just wanted you to know, if you had questions, let us know. There's nothing else. Sarah, have you put any thought into, and I, maybe it's too early to ask, of when we start bringing our meetings back to the courthouse? Is that part of your, as you talk about opening up the courthouse, that sort of made me think, you know, is that part of your discussion with elected?
It definitely is. And I, and it's something I'm very open to what the, what the county commission would like to do in that regard. You know, I think it is important to note here that we still are really asking folks to, to, you know, as they begin to enter the public that they follow social distancing practices. And that includes staying six feet apart. And in our commission chambers, sometimes that's a challenge. So I do think one of the things that I was hoping that we could stay in the Zoom format for at least a few more weeks, ideally, to try to, to, just so we can ensure that social distancing and not have to worry about the public wanting to try to enter this. They certainly can, we are open, but that they can feel comfortable that they can access our meetings through Zoom. We are, we generally don't get a large amount of folks for our public meetings, but, but we could. And so I think it's important that we be prepared for that outcome. But I'd be interested in what the commission thinks in terms of that. And we can certainly do whatever the commission feels is best in that regard.
Well, I know that I had previously mentioned that I would, I would like to at least continue this way through the end of May and then see, you know, with, with the governor's, what the governor comes out with, what the next phase looks like. You know, what our cases look like at the end of the month. And then I think the governor originally, and Patrick or Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, had talked about these phases kind of ending maybe around June 15th. So maybe setting that, you know, mid-June is a goal. Just to give this kind of time to shake out, once people are back out and around, see what kind of, is there going to be a spike? I mean, I, I think that we're all finally getting the hang of this after, you know, not just this Wednesday meeting, but all the other meetings that we're doing throughout the week. So I, I personally am more comfortable doing it this way. And I also think it sends a message that we want to practice social distancing and, and there's, there's going to be limits to the number of people that can gather also. So how, you know, that was one of our big questions was how do you do that? How do you say only 10 people can be in the commission room when, you know, our little group of county staff and commissioners accounts for seven or eight sometimes? So I'm good with this for right now.
I, I agree. I think this, it sets a good example to the community. And I think it's, you know, I think we do have a sense of a, or I have a, you know, some concern about the opening up and the potential for, you know, kind of a spike again. So for us not to participate in that spike would be probably good. And hopefully, hopefully, there'll be a smooth, slow opening up. But I want to give, I, you'll notice, except for signing on at the very last second today, no technical difficulties on the, at the Thelman household. And I owe that to Robin Crabtree. Just want to give a shout out to Robin, who called me last week and talked me through a different way of getting to these Zoom meetings. And it has helped me at several meetings along the way. And I'm really grateful she took pity on me and, and gave me a different, kind of a different way of going at it. So, so I'm fine with continuing on Zoom, although I really, I miss the, I think that it's, it's more difficult, I think, to have a full discussion in a way. I miss that, but, but I think this, this will do until the time is right.
I do want to point out that I, I am planning for a four o'clock work session next week on the 20th. So we had scheduled to have a work session with planning and zoning folks about CUPs and home-based businesses. And we pushed that off in March when we were ratcheting the meetings down. Got in that presentation to be ready to go online. So I would like us to meet next Wednesday at four o'clock. And planning and zoning staff are ready to do that presentation for us via Zoom. And I think it's, I think it's, you know, it'll be good to talk about something besides COVID. And, and then, you know, this is an important thing, I think, for us to be thinking about in terms of, you know, land use in, in the unincorporated area. So I want us to try to start easing back into more conversations about those topics. So even to that end, if there's additional topics that commissioners would like work sessions on, you know, we had sort of cleared our decks. But I do think we're in the position to be able to schedule some of those. And I know, I think as we approach budget, I'll probably have a few more things to bring to you. But I'm definitely open to some ideas if we can give staff time to get them prepared and back on the agenda.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Okay, well, there's nothing else?
Oh, you know what? I just thought of one thing. Sarah, I've been getting some phone calls about the fair. And I just kind of said, you know, a lot of this has to do with, with the governor, you know, what the orders are from the governor. At this time, I don't think we're really in a position to say yea or nay or, or even what it's going to look like. So I didn't know if you'd heard anything, but I want to pass that along that the question is coming up.
Yeah, I have, I appreciate that. Yeah, I do think, you know, they've reached out with, with questions and guidance. And, and I think we're, you know, I, I asked them or told them to look towards what the governor is saying. But at the same time, locally, you know, I think we will have resources at public health to provide folks with some answers and guidance. You know, and we're going to be faced with this stuff all summer long and into the fall. And so I, it's, you know, we, it's, this is kind of our new conversation of anytime you have a group together, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we're keeping people safe? What are we doing to make sure that, you know, we are being responsible in terms of that? And I think it's going to be really part of this next wave and why I'm so eager to really get this recovery committee going so that there can be more conversations about that and folks that are focused on doing that together. But, you know, with the reopening, we would be looking at, you know, opening up the fairgrounds again for rentals in, in June, in July. And, you know, what, and I think there are pieces of things that we will be able to continue to do. And then there might be some things that we have to take a year off from. And I do think that it's, but I appreciate you that heads up and that definitely had come to my attention. And, and I think we're, we're hoping to give the Fair Board some guidance within the next couple of weeks so that they can make some decisions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, Sarah, thanks to you and your team for all your hard work. We really do appreciate it. And thank you, commissioners. We'll see you next week at four o'clock for our work session, and we are adjourned.
Take care, everybody.
Bye.